What is going on beautiful people? Welcome back to the eight one seven podcast where we talk about the lovely city of Fort Worth, Texas. We get into politics, business, culture, news. If it impacts you as a Fort Worthian, we discuss it. We give you one big story, three short stories and wins and losses. I'm with my co-host Anne Zeta and a special guest, former county commissioner of precinct two Devon Allen. She was also former EMT. She was the youngest elected commissioner in Tarrant County history, the third woman ever in the hundred years of court to be elected. We have Devon Allen on the show. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Well, we love starting the show out with what is your Fort Worth story? So how have have you were you born and raised here? What's your moments in Fort Worth that got you here?
Yeah. So I was actually born in Houston.
Awesome.
And I lived there for several years. I was one of those kids that has like a long history of moving around a lot. So by the time I was 12, I'd been to as many schools in four different cities in three different states. But Fort Worth was always my anchor because my dad's parents, my grandparents, who were originally from East Texas, Palestine, Texas, we called them mama and papa. I mean, like you can't get more Texan than that. They lived in Morningside. So East Berry, Mississippi area, they had a family business for 40 years. They owned real estate. They had a wrecker service that served like Oklahoma, Louisiana and Texas. And theirs was the only address that I really bothered to memorize their address, their phone number, their house always had running water, AC, heat, food, love, unconditional love. And so my grandfather, who gave me away at my wedding, many years back, he passed over 10 years ago. But my grandmother, Mama, is still living. She just turned 90 this past April and I see her about every other week. So Fort Worth is home to me in many ways. And then ultimately that's where I started my career, working for at that time, Mayor Pro Tem Kathleen Hicks. Yep.
Wow. Well, I would love to know how, you know, looking at Fort Worth today, post being a public official, you know, kind of seeing the state, what would you kind of tell an average Fort Worthian who may doesn't know what's going on at the county and what they might need to be more aware about?
Fort Worth, as is Tarrant County, is in a huge transition period. As of the 2020 census, Fort Worth or Tarrant County became a minority, majority or majority minority county. And I think that's reflected in a lot of the places when you spend time out and about in Tarrant County. The precinct that I represented in Southeast Tarrant County was one of the most diverse precincts in the state. And, and I think as, and I know we're going to talk more about this, but as we've seen with some of the actions of the current commissioners court and elsewhere throughout the county is some members of our community are having to contend with what this diversity means for them. And others of our community are obviously intentionally trying to limit the voices, the power, the freedoms of the diversity of our county.
Yeah, I think it even started before 2021 because when I was serving on the city council, we had a demographer come to the council to speak about the demographics of the city and the county.
Yeah.
And I watched some of my colleagues across the table with looks of shock on their face at the numbers that were being reported. So, and that was back in 2014, 2015.
Yeah.
So I think it's definitely been on the rise.
Yes. And then that also speaks to, I mean, an issue with our state. I mean, like Texas was one of the only largest states in the nation that put no money into a statewide census count effort. That's a hot mess.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're not going to count you. And by not counting you, we're telling you that you don't matter. We want to make sure that when we do congressional reapportionment and everything else that's, you know, determined by the census, we want to make sure that you're not accounted for.
So I would love to like, obviously like you care a lot about this, this stuff, but it's like, how did you go from like being an EMT, being the youngest commissioner, like deciding to run as a minority voice in the county, kind of before all this stuff is like where it is today? Like, how do you like, how do you, did you know when you were running or like what, what made you run?
Now, it took me a while to reach that decision, which is not untypical for women in particular. When considering your run for office, I don't know if you
Waiting for somebody else to tell you that you should kind of thing or imposter syndrome.
That, and then just, you know, especially in this county, quite frankly, depending on the type of woman that you are, it's a bear to raise money. It's a bear to get visibility. And the way that you're characterized as a woman candidate is totally different than how you're characterized when you're a man that's running. But so I was an EMT for about three and a half years. Shout out to TCC in the Northeast Campus. They are one of the main providers of the education that's required to sit for your state and national EMT certification. So I did that one summer while I was a student at UT Arlington. And then I loved the work and but then I got to this point to where I realized, and I was also pre-med biology major. But I realized that I did not enjoy that although I enjoyed serving people, just not in the healthcare setting. And honestly, I think I was kind of burnt out because I worked nights, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, 3:00 PM to 3:00 AM, and then went to school during the day. You know, napped in the car in the student parking lot, that kind of thing. And I mean, it was just a grueling schedule. Again, I did love the work helping people, but just not in that way. And so I came to this critical impasse trying to figure out, okay, well, I'd taken all these, you know, upper level science classes, but I'm, I was, nothing in me wants to take the MCAT, nothing in me wanted to go visit medical schools. So then kind of had a heart to heart with myself. And then ultimately I decided to pivot to, you know, finding something else where I could still help people. And at the time, my ex-husband was a family friend of former Mayor Pro Tem Kathleen Hicks. And so, and at that time also, we had some real estate interest in a council district aid. And so he was talking to her and she said she was looking for a council aid. And so I interviewed all of that. It had been a number of days since I had heard anything. So this tells you how green I was because I, I knew that she was going to be at city hall on Tuesday. Had no appreciation for what, you know, the rigor of those days are for council members.
On Tuesdays, yes.
Yeah.
They're pretty full day.
Right. But I was like, well, I know she's going to be there. So I just, I went up to city hall and they were like, well, you don't have an appointment with Councilwoman Hicks. And I said, no, I'll just wait for her. So I waited for like three hours and then they were taking a break from council or something like that. She came up to the hallway. She said, yeah, you've been waiting for me. I said, yeah, so I just want to know if I have the job, yes or no. And she said, you're here, you have the job. And that was literally how I got my start into public service in the local government front or area. So really I worked for her for a little over two years and then ended up working for Senator Davis, her first year in the senate, worked for State Representative Chris Turner, both on his contested, three-way contested primary in 2012. And then was his district director and ended managing this campaign. I did government relations for UT Arlington. So we're talking about over, you know, 15 years, all this has happened. And, you know, when you're working for elected officials and working on campaigns, the question always is, well, when are you going to run? And my answer had been no, absolutely not. I'm totally fine being behind the scenes, being one of the people or the person to make it happen. I was asked to run for Arlington City Council twice and each time I said no. And then members of the community, as well as some of my close mentors said, okay, you really need to seriously consider this. So I did more of that heart to heart. And then I really had to think about the issues that were that most were the most impactful to my life. And, and I share this story often. It doesn't get any easier to share it. That my mom left an abusive marriage and she was a single mother, black woman in the late eighties, early nineties in Texas, struggling to get by. And so she developed a bad habit, which was a crime, was writing hot checks or check kiting. And so we were in Harris County at that time in Houston. And so one of the judges, a county judge at that time, not like a commissioner county judge, but another kind of a criminal court judge, decided to make an example out of her and he told her this, I'm going to make an example out of you. And so after writing checks for rent that bounced for groceries, for gas, then he pulled together her misdemeanor offenses to a felony. And so she was sentenced to 10 years in state prison for what amounted to $2,200 of bad debt. And so I have memories of visiting my mom in jail in halfway house. But so I have other stories that really speak to that it was county government that had a huge impact on my life. And I had always paid attention to what was happening in county government, but then I started paying even more attention. And here was the, what nailed it for me that I said, I'm going to run, I'm going to run to unseat. At that time, the council, I mean, the commissioner for precinct two is, he was at a Trump rally with a county lapel pin on and boasting about his being there. And if he was afraid of, you know, people's response to that. And he said something along the lines, this may not be an exact quote, but if being called a racist is the price I have to pay, I'm willing to pay a hundredfold to preserve America. And so I was like, even if I had thought, hmm, should I do this? I already knew that I could do a better job than him. And then when he said that, that was it for me. It was like, if that's a principle that he is proud of, that's probably a principle that resides in his heart. That's a principle that he lives by and that's a principle that he's using to guide his decisions from that dais. And I was like, that's wrong.
Yeah.
And so I filed, well, I formally launched my campaign in August of 2018. And then campaigned for like a year and a half. And then I had a contested primary March of 2018. And then unseated a two-term far-right commissioner in November of 2018.
Wow.
Yeah.
You talking about, you know, seeing racism at the top of the county ticket as our leadership inspired you to kind of get into it and really step into it for, for the right reasons. I mean, you're kind of seeing the same thing today with, you know, Judge Tim O'Hare blatantly saying like, you're not a Republican unless you've been called a racist. How would you look at today's dais and like today setup where, you know, Commissioner Simmons, who's currently precinct two? Like, how do you look at their current dais communication and behavior compared to what you were seeing back then?
It's just more out in the open. It was always there. I think people were just more polite about it. And there was always this kind of bragging point that at least we don't argue out in front like Dallas. We did behind closed doors.
Does that too?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're constantly pointing to Dallas and saying, oh, we all, we get together and we're not rude to each other. And we come to consensus and, and all vote together.
I mean, and certainly, you know, being from the South and I'm a proud Southern woman, but there is a thing, you know, called like Southern nice nasty. And so I think that things are just out in front more than they were when I was on the court. But the treatment is still the same and the tone is still the same. The culture is even more toxic now. I mean, I can't run into a county employee now without some of them literally barreling me over with hugs, saying, we miss you. We miss the old court or some of them breaking down in tears. I don't know how much longer I can be here. You know, I'm trying to wait until I can retire. I've spent my year, my career as a civil servant and to see our county come to this breaks is breaking so many people's hearts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I feel like a lot of those break hearts is directed to the outwardness now that it is out in the open. And so people are like, oh, now the outward open politics has gotten into Tarrant County. And so this is why it's bad. Is that usually the narrative or is it more the narrative because we just have greater evils or and, and people like Judge Tim O'Hara is trying to racially gerrymander stuff. They're really more upset about that. Like when you see staff.
I think, I think it's both and.
Okay.
Yeah. I think it's both and. There was one Tarrant County employee who said that Tarrant County was dogged before, you know, the federal government was.
Yeah.
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 Or dogged. Yeah. I mean, it's, it makes me tremendously sad. And, you know, people ask me all the time why I didn't run again. And I have to be honest, just like I was when I announced that I wasn't seeking reelection is that my running was a very thoughtful, prayerful process. And really, when you are in elected office, you know, and it's kind of like a matter of course, where of course you're going to run again, right? Like, but I did the same soul searching, did the same praying, asked myself the same questions and ultimately came to the conclusion that I needed to finish my work in four years. And for anyone who's ever considering running for office, these are the questions I ask myself. Am I the right person? Am I doing this for the right reasons? Is this the right time? Is there someone who is better positioned to do it? And then
I don't think a lot of people ask themselves those questions. Once they get into the seat, they, like you said, everybody just assumes you're going to continue. And there's been so many, especially on the county commission, people who stayed there for 20, 30 years.
That's right.
And to your point about, am I the right person? And is there somebody else that could do this better? I think elected seats should be turning over and having new people. I don't think that that should be a career path for someone.
I agree.
Because things change and the needs of the community change. And if you're going to have elected officials that reflect the community, those seats need to change.
That's right. Yeah. Well, and then I couldn't have known that during the four years that I would serve, that we would go through a global pandemic, that we would go through a 100-year winter storm with, with a storm Yuri, that we would, you know, go through this global social justice movement. And then I went through a host of personal things and I really needed the time to step back that I hadn't really had in my entire career at that time as either staff or as a candidate or an elected office to really do that. I lost my father unexpectedly. I was hospitalized with COVID. I'm still dealing with some of those, some symptoms. You know, I had a divorce. And so, you know, like you're still a person. And I think oftentimes that people probably should take a step back and they choose not to because they're afraid of who am I if I'm not in elected office? But then what ends up happening, I believe, is that some of those root issues that you don't deal with, you act them out. You know, and you act them out on the public, right? And you try to get validation for yourself through some of your actions when your responsibility is to represent the best interest of those who you literally put your hand up to and said, I will uphold the laws of this state and of this nation. And instead people just do what they want to do, which is exactly what Tim O'Hare is doing.
Yeah. What are things that you're watching this, you know, June 3rd on Tuesday? We, we drop on Monday. What are some things you are watching with, with your experience and background?
You know, I don't want to be pessimistic and say, well, we already know what's going to happen. But I'm, I am, I feel pretty positive that we know that the majority court is going to put actions in place to disenfranchise voters of color. And so just as I had shared when I was at the public hearing in Como, the public hearing in Arlington, and I wasn't able to make the first or the fourth public hearings, is that we're ready for a fight. I mean, the community has shown that we're ready for a fight. And what's unfortunate is that it's going to cost the county and cost us as taxpayers money to fight to make sure that elected leadership at the county level does the right thing by all voters and especially voters of color.
Yeah. And I think we've touched on this several times about the process that they have utilized and the process that you're familiar with at the county level in 2020, 2021, the process that I'm familiar with, that the city went through for redistricting in 2021. And it's incensing, you know, it makes me very angry about how abbreviated and quick this process has been and how untransparent and how the people in those seats have not gone to all those public marrying hearings and heard from the folks that were there to speak. One of the points that I didn't come clear to me until the meeting in Arlington was that they didn't even set it up so that all the commissioners could attend because there's a quorum issue unless you publicize the meeting in a certain way that allows all of them to be there.
For it to be a public meeting.
Right. Yeah. So none of those meetings were set up in that way so that if more than three showed up, somebody would have to leave because there would be a quorum. So, I mean, they clearly didn't even intend for them to come and hear from the public. And then the maps, five maps with no explanation. If you look back to when you were going through it in 2021, the consultant got up and gave an actual presentation and a briefing and explained where things came from. So can you share with folks like a little bit about how the process was handled back then versus now? I mean, I kind of did a little bit of that, but I know you were there. So you might have some more detail.
Yeah, I was there, which makes it, you know, crazy that people are saying that it did not happen. When, first of all, that was my lived experience as well as the other court members, those in the audience, those that were viewing the meeting, the meeting minutes, the, the meeting audio and video. And so redistricting did happen in 2021. Redistricting did happen in Tarrant County in 2021. Can't state it more simply than that. And the process was at least six months from when Bickerstaff Heath was acquired and also shortly thereafter, if not at the same meeting, Commissioner Books made a request to have his own representation with Jesse Gaines, Attorney Jesse Gaines. I made a request to have my own representation for our precincts and our constituents in precinct two and his in precinct one of Chad Dunn. And the majority court would not approve the contracts. And so proceeding from that point, then we had multiple public hearings. I hosted two public hearings in precinct two, which, which I understand, obviously your listenership and viewership is from all over. But for those who aren't familiar with precinct two in Tarrant County, that's Southeast Tarrant County. So it's Arlington, Kennedale, Pantigo, Dow, Worthington Gardens, Mansfield and Grand Prairie. And so that's a pretty expansive area, right? For each of the four precincts. And so I hosted two because then my constituents in far North Arlington, driving all the way down to Mansfield or even South Grand Prairie, like to the county line. I mean, we're talking about potentially a 30-plus minute commute. And if you really want people to show up, you need to make it easy, convenient for them to show up. And so I hosted one in Mansfield and then I hosted one in Arlington. And we presented the maps and there was a representation from Bickerstaff Heath that talked about the maps, that answered questions. There was a representation from county administration that answered questions. I was there. I answered questions, but most importantly, we were there to listen and to actually consider what we heard. And ultimately Bickerstaff Heath and their evaluation made the recommendation that we leave the county commissioner maps as is. Now, there were additional fights related to redistricting when it came to justice of the peace. All of the JP and constable precincts that were represented by elected officials and or candidates of color. And so we're talking about two, five, six, eight. And well, we'll have to come back to that because ultimately what I want to make clear again, that redistricting did occur for the county commissioner precincts in 2021. So what they're doing now is intentional. And obviously, even though they're saying that it's about partisanship and political map drawing, that's not what it's about, right? It is very clearly about, it's about race. It's about race. It's about race. And if you look at, at least for the five maps, I know there are two additional maps, I guess that have come out.
Six and seven. So I was confused at first with the five because only three commissioners gave input for those five maps apparently, because two of the commissioners said, we should stick with the current maps and not do this. So how did we get five maps with three commissioners giving input? And then to come up with maps six and seven within less than a week of when they're going to be taking action on how they move forward with no explanation about where these maps came from, whether it, they were influenced by the public meetings. Because again, the consultants have done nothing. They have not presented. They have not briefed. They have not. I mean, they maybe, yeah, show up to the meetings. They've showed up to some of the meetings, sorry, and, and been totally mute or not come into the room.
Not coming, right?
Yeah.
Well, also all the maps are just variations of the exact same thing. Like it's hard to tell one from the other.
Right. Where you're packing minority voters into one precinct, diluting their vote. And well, cracking and packing, which we've heard those terms so many times, but what it amounts to is breaking the law, intentional discrimination on the basis of race. That's it.
Yeah.
In 2021, in addition to completing the redistricting process, redistricting for the county commissioner precincts, we also addressed the redistricting of the justice of the peace and the constable lines. Those are different lines than the county commissioner precincts. And then for each county commissioner precinct, there are two justice of the peace and two constables. And so in that redistricting process, there were multiple, as I understand it, backdoor meetings. This seems to be a common theme in Tarrant County. Backdoor meetings where the, where Republican constables basically did everything that they could to unseat current, currently elected Democratic JPs and constables. And then also draw out candidates who were seeking to run against some of them. So definitely, I think, having Judge DeLeon on to talk about what happened in JP five, which for 30 years was a JP precinct that performed for minority voters. And then also JP two, that at that time Constable Robert McGinty represented, which he lost as a result of that redistricting. And then Judge Woodard, I mean, it, it affects multiple people. And so I ultimately ended up, along with others, suing the county for the process that they followed in redistricting the JP and the constable lines. And then we also sought the assistance of the Department of Justice to make sure that things were done right. So there's so much to unpack there that I know we won't have time to really get to. But maybe in a future episode, we can bring on some of those JPs and constables so they can talk about it. But it just, it shows that there is a history of intentional racial discrimination in Tarrant County. And so this, this current fight unfortunately is as a result of, I think, previous fights. And we've got to do something about this now so that it does not get even worse.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it harkens back a little bit to what happened on city council redistricting, that there was a conversation about having an independent redistricting commission come in and do that so that it wasn't the electeds that are currently in office drawing those lines in order to draw out people that might challenge them or draw in people that they wanted to be able to be more challenging.
That's right.
And I was all for independent redistricting. And while Fort Worth did it very transparently, they were on camera, moving lines on maps and having those conversations in front of people where we could all see it. And I, I watched myself get drawn in and out of district nine a couple of times during those conversations. That independent redistricting, I think, would have been a better way to do it in all cases. And clearly this, this is showing other ways in which people have kind of done it in an underhanded way that wasn't even as transparent as the way that the city did it.
Yeah. And then some of these, some of the consultants that have been involved in the county redistricting process, similar to PILF, I mean, have a history of bad acting. The consultants in part that submitted some of the maps for the JP and the constable and even that tried to pair me and Roy and a county commissioner and one of the maps tried to pair us, which is immediately against the law. You know, some of those same actors, Murphy, Nassica and PILF.
Yeah.
I mean, so they're not trying new things. And so I think we just have to continue to stand up to it and fight it with every tool and resource that we have available to us.
How do you feel like, I know you have experience of state.
How do you feel like, I know you have experience of state uh, cases around redistricting. So what, what are some things that you kind of, if you could kind of walk people who don't really understand the law of like, what's kind of the process would look like? When we go to court against someone like Tim O'Hare for doing this?
Yeah. One, I'll say that when I was on the commissioner's court, I didn't just care about what happened in Tarrant County redistricting. Whether it was a commissioner precincts, JP or constable. Um, and those kind of go by a different set of rules, which is why I wanted to ta- talk about that a little bit separate. But I, you know, was a regular witness in providing testimony before the state legislature on the, how the um, the state drew congressional lines as well as senate district lines, including how they drew senate district ten. Um, and just crack that all the way up to totally dilute the voting strength of um, voters of color. Did you ask me about the process for a lawsuit? Um, well, so you, you have to have people who um, are willing to say, we're aggrieved. Um, we want justice. And um, then you have to have an attorney who's willing to take on the case. Attorney or attorneys that are willing to take on the case. Um, now of course, any um, legal matter, you know, comes at an expense. And so even as I had shared at a um, I guess a listening session that Commissioner Miles had hosted throughout his precinct is um, that for the community that we do need to be prepared to show up and to give our, you know, um, to, and give our uh, public comment, but we also need to prepare, be prepared for if it comes to us also contributing to um, the cost of legal defense. Um, cause it will be costly. It will be costly. Um, so I think one of the things also that the community um, needs to consider is unfortunately, um, legal battles like this take time. And so I can't help but to think that we cannot grow weary and well doing. Like we have got to stay committed. And also, you know, if everyone does their part, um, I think that we can get the justice that voters in Tarrant County, especially voters of color in Tarrant County deserve. So it will be really interesting to see how Tuesday, exactly how Tuesday plays out. Um, I think it's no coincidence that Judge O'Hare is being so intentional about saying that redistricting is on the basis of um, partisanship. When we know that it's on, it's about race, it's about race, it's about race. Yeah.
I guess o- ultimately what I'm like, I think what's exciting about precinct two, it's like the battleground of, of Tarrant County is really in precinct two, where you have leadership standing up for and against. And so I guess like, what can you tell us about precinct two? For residents who may not understand the culture and the demographics and how that changes among Mansfield, Grand Perry, Arlington, Pantigo, I mean, such a diverse melting pot of views and ideas. Like how can someone who lives in precinct one or precinct three, which these are very much, we kind of know who we are and we're like a pretty big voting block on those things. Like what can we know about, I guess, like the melting pot of precinct two?
Yeah. Um, so you know, Tarrant County is made up of what 41 cities. Um, some of which are the two largest are Fort Worth, the county seat, and then Arlington. Um, and then some midsize cities to some towns. Um, and so I represented Arlington and then those five other cities that I shared. Um, but precinct two is really the true swing precinct. Um, when I was elected in 2018, um, the voters who elected me, um, we collectively made history, right? I became the youngest county commissioner ever elected um, in the history of the county. I became the third woman ever to serve in the 100 plus year history of the court. Um, now we, with Commissioner Simmons being in office, she's the fourth woman in uh, over a hundred years. Like I need that to sink and sit. Um, also became the first Democrat elected from precinct two for the county commissioner's court and the first African American. Um, this is what happens when you allow voters, especially voters of color, to elect the candidate of their choice. That's a reflection of precinct two. That's a reflection of the changes in Tarrant County that have occurred. The changes that the majority court right now are afraid of. And um, I loved representing Southeast Tarrant County. Um, you know, for the 12, 14 hour days that I would have in serving in office, um, I could be at a small town meeting uh, with, you know, mayors and, and others who with smaller towns, they don't have the tax base to support some of their infrastructure needs. So I did a lot of interlocal agreements with those uh, small towns. And it was really important to make sure that the small towns got just as much attention as the big cities did, that had the city managers, that had the staff, that had the, the um, government relations teams and all that. And um, and I think that that's a reflection of just the diversity, not just when it comes to race and ethnicity and some of the common demographic points that we think of. Um, and so that kept me on my toes, making sure that I was actually active in the community, listening to the needs of the community, which of course involves showing up, which some of our current commissioners apparently cannot be inconvenienced enough.
Not even to show up to the court sometimes. Right. I have seen some people absent at some of just the regular court meetings. Plus I think they voted to reduce the number of times they meet in a month. Every week.
Yeah, every week we had committee meetings. Um, let's see. Uh, even like, let's say with any election issue, any healthcare issue, anything like that, I would have multiple community meetings, hearings throughout the precinct. I never wanted a constituent of mine, you know, less traffic to have to drive more than 15, 20 minutes to hear from their county government, to see what their county government was doing for them. Um, to do anything less than that, especially when you're getting paid a six figure salary. And I regularly voted to turn down my own raise. And my staffs, uh, some of my staff, their, their salaries were indexed off of mine. So I worked with the DA, I worked with the auditor. I worked with the county administrators and HR to make sure that we, I signed an affidavit on an annual, almost annual basis to say, even though I'm turning down a raise for myself, I want to make sure that my staff isn't negatively impacted by that. So you can do that if you want to. So the fact that we have commissioners right now that are earning six-figure salaries on the backs of Tarrant County residents, but will not show up for them, it's egregious. It's absolutely egregious.
Was, did you feel like regardless of party, everyone had that respect in, on your court at that time?
For the most part. I mean, some issues did come, were, you know, did come down the party lines. Uh, 287G came down to party lines. Um, removing um, uh, Confederate monument uh, from outside the old courthouse, party lines. Um, even some of the things related to COVID. Party lines. Um, so it wasn't unusual, but also we were able to have, for the most part substantive discussions and to what seems to be now a dirty word is compromise. We were able to reach a compromise. Um, and where we weren't, I mean, I didn't hold grudges, but I was never going to back down from a fight for what was in the best interest of my constituents in precinct two. I would, I had a sworn duty to represent their interests first, knowing that in doing so, it also would have an impact on the entire county. And now it just seems like, you know, some members of the court, they're just out for themselves, whatever works for them, whatever's going to get them. And you know, their friends elected or reelected.
I can't imagine uh, someone who was pro Tim O'Hare, Matt Kraus, Manny Ramirez, hearing how you led and being like, oh yeah, my, my person I voted is thinking about the people in the city, they're thinking about the people in the suburb, they're representing all of us. Like I would almost feel like disappointed that I don't have this type of representation uh, in my precinct.
Everybody should be, because this is the type of representation that we all deserve. As someone who will listen to everyone, take everything into consideration, of course, put their precinct that they were elected to represent first and foremost, but understand the impact for the whole region, for the whole, beyond even the county, the whole region. There's representation that needs to occur and, and conversations and compromise, as you said, that needs to happen.
Yeah. And I will say that serving was not easy work. It was never supposed to be. I mean, you can't represent the third largest county in our state and the, I think, what 13th largest in our nation? Wi- without it being difficult work. I mean, when I talk to colleagues from across the nation, um, I for, I served in the, on the large urban county caucus for the National Association of Counties. So we're talking about Miami Dade County and LA County, those were colleagues that I served with um, Harris County. Um, and you know, we were all um, met with very big issues, complex issues that take time to understand, that take time to um, come to uh, decisions or agreement on how to solve these big problems. Um, and you know, putting personalities aside, putting, you know, actually honoring someone's working style, like I don't see that happening on this current court.
It's a lot of, I don't answer to you and I'm not going to have that conversation with you and I've made this decision unilaterally. And I don't need to tell you why. That's, that's what I've been witnessing, which is really disconcerting.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a lot of taking things very personal. Um, and also not being able to handle being challenged, which I mean, at times me and Judge Whitley, like, you know, people have, you know, commented on how we would have a back and forth. Um, and you can't work in that kind of environment, be working on these big issues. Um, where you're literally making life and death decisions for people that you never know, you'll never meet, but you swore to represent. Um, and sometimes, you know, emotions can get high, things can get tense. Um, but there's never an excuse to outrageously disrespect someone, period. There's not an excuse. That doesn't mean that it, that it doesn't happen. Um, and so if you disrespect someone publicly, then you should apologize to them publicly, period.
Final question, uh, this is just any advice or thoughts you have to the future of Tarrant County and specific, you know, the democratic kind of coalition and party. Bud Kennedy wrote an article um, not too long ago about, and a quote said, to Democrats, it's about survival. If they don't at least raise enough fuss to get Fort Worth and Arlington voters stirred up over getting divided and losing power to Keller, South Lake and Haslett, then the Democratic Party will continue to struggle the way it has for 30 years. What do you think with such a purple candidacy? What does the democratic side of, of the voices need more of? Uh, to have more systems and structures to actually advocate and stand up when things like this are at harm and a more proactive uh, way moving forward?
That's a big question that doesn't have an easy answer. And I have been involved in politics, public service, all of that for over 20 years in this county. Um, I'm going to say structurally is that there's kind of a lack of um, a resource in terms of talent of people that are willing to do some of the behind the scenes work. I'm not saying that it doesn't exist, but we need a lot more of it. I would also say that you know, I think sometimes that um, we kind of are too nice about things. And I'm not saying that we need to be disrespectful. Right? We still need to honor people as humans and as individuals. And as a woman of faith, that we need to, you know, seek to find the good in people. But we also cannot be afraid to call out wrongs, right? We need to call them out. We need to be explicit about what's happening. Um, we need to make sure that we are less concerned about maintaining friendships. Um, because if, I, I'm not going to, I cannot consider you a friend if you're willing to blatantly discriminate against somebody. You're not my friend. Um, if you are willing, if you are unwilling to speak up when someone is being harmed. Um, and so I think sometimes in our wanting to, you know, like not call people out, because we don't want to catch the smoke. I think at some point we have to be willing to make the sacrifices to do the right thing. Um, and I get that that's not always easy to do, but I do feel like um, for Democrats in Tarrant County, we need to do that, period.
Well, I think that's a great way to wrap up the interview. Uh, thank you, Devin, for joining us on the 817 podcast. We look forward to hearing you probably down the road and giving us more insight.
Yeah, I definitely think to your point that even if this battle doesn't end exactly the way that we would like it to, that it's a call to action that we continue to be involved. I think some of the stuff that you've pointed out here about the county, people don't understand how the county works and how it impacts their life. And this has brought that to light for everyone. So we appreciate you coming and helping educate folks so that they can figure out how to get more involved and be a part of the solution for the future.
Well, I thank you all for hosting these conversations on a regular basis. Um, I am a fan of the pod. Um, and then I would love to come back anytime.
Well, there you have it. That was Devin Allen. What an insightful interview to have. Um, as we're going through an historic time here in Tarrant County. It's time to move into the three short stories, so we can get some updates outside of redistricting. And I know you're going to talk about what's going on in session and what was going on with the state stuff.
Yeah, so we do have some state legislative updates and basically how they impact Fort Worth. Um, these are not set in stone yet because the session is just wrapping up and all of these bills go to the governor's desk. And for those who don't know, the governor can either sign or veto, but he doesn't have to sign every single one. If he doesn't sign it and it was approved by both the House and the Senate, it just as automatically becomes a law in September, I believe. So there were several articles this week that touched on some things that have been happening in the legisla- in the legislature and some of the bills that are moving forward. Um, there's an article about the people's ability to veto. And that is basically talking about a petition process that would allow citizens to call for basically the impeachment of one of their legislative leaders. And unfortunately, it basically helps get rid of probably more liberal leaning or Democrat um, people and doesn't help so much because I think it has to go through the commissioner's court and the county judge makes decisions about whether a petition is accepted and that goes through. So while a few people thought maybe it would be a way to impeach someone that they felt like weren't doing a good job on either side, I think that there would be challenges there. Um, there was also an article talking about the use of flock cameras. Um, that's a tu- a subject that has touched on Fort Worth in a number of ways. These are cameras that read license plates and you can track somebody's um, movements in a community using them. Uh, recently, this article speaks to using them to follow someone that family members were concerned about their wellbeing, um, after they had had an abortion, I understand. Um, and they were able to find this person, but the concern is that you would be able to follow someone if they maybe traveled to a place where to avail themselves of healthcare in a a state that allowed that to be, um, and that that might not be such a great thing. Where it touches on Fort Worth also is that the city of Fort Worth has the Neighborhood Improvement Program, which identifies neighborhoods that have had a lack of services over many, many years and have had systemic disinvestment to try to raise those communities up. And the offerings that the city has are things that improve streets and sidewalks and lighting. And one of the things that they often discuss in those communities is whether or not having cameras um, would help with public safety. So that was why that kind of raised up to me, just those use of those cameras, because it's something we have availed ourselves of here in Fort Worth. There was another bill that protects child marriage, which we found to be pretty concerning. There were several local legislators that voted to continue to allow there to be a path for minors, 16-year-olds to get married. Um, here at the local level, my understanding is that Cook, Lowe, Luther, Shatzline and Tenderhold all voted to protect child marriage, which is very concerning. Um, then there was the issue of proposing a ban on sister cities' relationship with China. So we had a local city council member be very vocal about that. Um, they added a caveat that would have it expire at the beginning of the session in 2027, so that they would have to revisit it. But basically if this bill passes and is signed into law, it would require the city of Fort Worth to sever its relationship since 2011 with our sister city in China. And then finally, there is a bill that touches on LGBTQ school clubs um, and bans their existence in public schools in Texas, which will have a great negative impact on support that the LGBTQ community can avail itself of in our public schools.
Yeah, I was, um, what's shocking about all of this, and I definitely think the best person to follow around what's going on at session is Michelle Davis's Lone Star Left. Um, she's been documenting every day what's going on there, but to me, the overall thing here is that there are even some Democrats who are voting yes to these kind of things. Um, and that's just shocking. And I think there should be more around highlighting these Democrats who I think if we were more informed, we would see that they're not actually standing up for democratic values or progressive ideas. Um, and that was something that was more informative to me, the great example of like Bojani, you know, voting yes against the sister, the, the sister cities program with the affiliation with uh, China residents from another city and how we in Fort Worth were working together. Um, you know, exchanging people to come give experiences and diverse perspectives.
Yeah. And I think that it's interesting also just it, this was a little overwhelming for me this morning, someone who has tried to pay attention to what is going on at the state level and receiving every day from various groups that are trying to advocate for things. Um, calls to action and requests for us to chime in with our representatives to say yay or nay to things and express our position on them and request that they vote in a certain way. And it's just, I mean, even just narrowing it down to the topics that I have found to be important in the work that I do, I'm overwhelmed. So I can't even imagine the average citizen understanding these bills. And in Sep- on September 1st, we're all going to get a big, long list of new laws that apply to us. And many people are going to be completely taken by surprise, having not paid much attention during the legislative session.
Well, you've brought it up before, but it's just part of the insanity of us having a part-time legislature. We're like, so much gets done in like five months and then nothing gets done for the next year and a half.
And all the unintended consequences that come up can't be fixed.
Exactly.
I don't know if I want them to be in session all the time though, because basically what I see is they do a ton of damage when they're there. And I would rather they not be there doing damage, I think, but it's.
Well, I would almost wish that it would, they would take more time to think things through a little bit more, rather than just cram everything in in such a small timeframe.
Yeah, and whoever's communicating with them ahead of session and writing these things for them and requesting that they do these things. And then basically telling the average individual that by the time session starts, it's almost too late to chime in because they've been having all these conversations in their home offices leading up to session. And then that leads back to who has access and who is writing this stuff for them. Because clearly they're not experts on all of these things. And do they have staff that are experts on it? Are they relying on lobbyists that are for the various industries? I mean, clearly, I'm asking that question a little tongue in cheek.
Yeah, and that's the, uh, I think that's the part where you see like the overflow of, of bills and trying to get things across is to distract us Yep. from like real things, like where were the bills actually about solving healthcare or dealing with Texas who has a lot of.
Education.
Yeah, education, um, infrastructure, all these things, transportation. We, instead of doing things around that, we banned LGBTQ clubs in schools and put the Ten Commandments up in schools. Like, that is like.
Nonsense.
The constantly of pitting people onto the fringes is uh, a game that right-wing Republicans use and that I think allows them to just like think they did stuff and their constituents think did stuff, rather than when they could actually help you with your real problems.
And micromanaging the heck out of everything. I mean, literally whenever a city goes and does something on its own that basically reflects the citizens of that community. I mean, the elected officials at that level are closer to their rep, the citizens that they represent. So if they want to move forward with something and then the state decides that's not something they want to see happen, they target these bills with language that makes it so clear, this is about Houston. This is about Houston, Dallas and San Antonio. This is about, they target it. And some, if you look at the bill writer and it's someone who doesn't even represent that area, I think there should be some issue with at least highlighting the fact that people not even from the communities, which they're narrowing down the focus of these bills to, are from that area, represent those constituents. There should be transparency that they are writing legislation that affects somebody else's constituents completely.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, speaking of bills that are being proposed or passed, uh, one of the other bills that we want to highlight that is seen as a win for Fort Worth, we're actually going to have Wesley uh, talk about this more with his perspective as a filmmaker. But according to the Fort Worth Report, an article by David Montgomery, May 26, Texas lawmakers approve boost in film incentive program, which was supported by Tay- Taylor Sheridan. Um, the House approved Senate Bill 2022 by a vote of 114 to 26 on Monday, after making a change in the Senate-passed bill. Uh, the Joan Huffman, the bill sponsor, told Fort Worth Report early Wednesday that she plans to concur with the amendment to facilitate the final Senate approval to Governor Abbott, who is expected to sign the bill. It proposes that the part that's Fort Worth really bases that Fort Worth Mayor Mattie Parker and Fort Worth Bay star producer Taylor Sheridan, uh, with several other actors, Matthew McConaughey, Woody Harrelson and Dennis Quaid, were part of the high-powered offensive campaign to propel Texas past states such as Georgia and New Mexico in attracting out-of-state production investments. Fort Worth surpassed Austin as the state's fourth-largest city with more than a million residents and is a major beneficiary of the legislation. The package will further expand film entertainment industry, resulting in economic impact of more than $700 million and 30,000 local jobs, according to the Fort Worth Film Commission. Wesley, what is your thoughts and concerns and things we need to be aware about the situation?
I have such complex feelings about film incentives because it's, it's a necessary evil in the film world where you have to offer incentives to bring productions here. There's, before Texas had incentives, there were so many films set in Texas that would shoot in New Mexico because they had incentives. Yes, as a filmmaker, it's usually needed, but as a citizen, that's not how I want to subsidize stuff. And the, the, it seems like part of the reason why this is like started to happen so, so quickly and with so much funding is because um, film has slowed down in California and a lot of the California productions that have moved here are making conservative media. We've got Dr. Phil, we've got The Chosen, which is that Jesus show. We've got Taylor Sheridan doing all of his very conservative shows. Um, so that's feels not great. Um, but also the Fort Worth film scene is based in commercial work. Like, you get paid pretty well to do not that much and you can make an easy living doing that. There's not as much film and TV here. And the, the outside productions that are coming here, they don't want to hire local people. They don't want to pay our rates.
And they want to bring in their own people from where they're coming from?
Exactly. Anything that's being paid well, they're flying people in. And then anything that's being paid poorly, no one here wants to do that. But they only get this incentive money if they hire locals. It used to be 75% had to be local. So every below-the-line job had to be, like, if your name wasn't in the opening credits, you had to be a local. Um, but then they lobbied against that because they didn't want to hire local or they said there wasn't enough talent, which is a lie. And so then you see programs like what TCC did with 101 Studios where they wanted to, they say train people to work in the film industry, but a lot of the jobs they were training people for aren't what we need to hire here locally. They weren't editors and camera ops usually. It's the stuff you only need on these big sets. And so then you're, you're training people who aren't familiar with how film operates in Texas. Cause like, even though we're a non-union state, we play by union rules. Like, it's small enough where we all know each other. And, you know, if you're a bad actor, you're going to get blacklisted and it's fine. It's good. Um, but by training people who don't know when they're being abused or being exploited, then you're just, I don't know, it's all icky and I don't feel great about it. So I'm, I'm really hoping that I'm wrong here. I'm hoping that we see more local filmmakers being able to take advantage of this money and make good, well-paying, uh, make good films that are well-paying for the crew and everyone's well taken care of. I would hope to see that, but based on everything I've seen so far, I don't have a lot of faith in that.
Yeah, I think the part that scares me is, you know, clearly Dan Patrick says, "We're not trying to make Texas the next Hollywood. We don't like Hollywood." Uh, "We want to export Texas values." Uh, and, and if you look at, the Austin Chronicle reported the rumored idea that right-wing figures in Texas were pushing for an increase in the Texas film incentives to enforce conservative rules regarding film and television projects being made in Texas. And so.
Well, that's why I said if they put restrictions like that on it, I'm not sure that Taylor Sheridan is going to be able to avail himself of these things. Because some of his shows have some stuff that I think Dan Patrick and some other folks would say do not reflect Texas values.
Yeah, and I, and it's, and it's, and it's just, I think Fort Worth continuing to be the Mecca of like a conservative metropolitan is what this also holds on to, all the things I've constantly said about the cowboy culture and the stockyards and how much we, you know, we fund. Like, we can't sell Republicanism, but we can sell cowboys. And now we have this, this funding to create more things that allows uh, this whole Texas propaganda. And, and I know that um, I, I unfortunately feel like this is something that it's really hard to, like, like, I am someone who would love to say to the mayor, meanwhile, our public schools are bleeding and suffering and we're about to lose 18 campuses and you didn't go down to the state for that, but instead you went down to the state to build a conservative Hollywood. The sad thing about that is I think there's some moderate Democrats who'd be like, "Oh, but it's like still jobs and like, it's a good thing." And I think Fort Worth, like, it's still like, this is a good thing, even if um, it regardless of party. And I think that's like, where I, I sometimes feel discouraged because I feel like we are the crevices, like the people who only really see it, but most people, 80% of people who would get surveyed in Fort Worth would probably be like, "Oh, this is great for us."
Well, and I think the jobs I've heard about, and this might be anecdotal, because it's just like what I see on social media is sharing, "Oh, you can go be an extra." And not even people who are actors on a regular basis are doing that. This is like, "Oh, you could be on one of these shows and see your face and how many people can run down there and be an extra this day or that day."
The extras I've talked to on Taylor Sheridan, Taylor Sheridan shows, they get paid $90 a day for like a 16-hour day.
Oh.
I pay people $50 an hour to be an extra.
Yeah.
Where do I sign up?
These are not actors that are making a living doing it. These are like people who want to see themselves in a TCU stadium shot on a Taylor Sheridan show or in the stockyards on a Taylor Sheridan show.
Yes, but then you can't, you can't do that and brag about, you know, bringing jobs.
Right.
Yeah.
Those aren't jobs. Those are just, you know, experiences.
Yep.
Yep. And, and, and something you brought up that it kind of resonates with me about incentives is that we have, we, the mindset is we have to play in incentives because if we don't play, we will lose to New Mexico. But it feels like if we all didn't play in incentives, would it be okay? Because it sounds like the people who benefit from incentives are the rich, not the rising filmmakers. And the same in business as well, you know, like, main, most of the incentives go to the big people. And it's like, still, people would want to make a living and some competitor will still build without incentives if they weren't there. Um, what's your take on all that?
I mean, it's a race to the bottom. Like, it is a necessary evil. Some state somewhere will be willing to pay people to come there. And then as soon as they do, then everyone has to.
And that's why when we get all into our AI conversation, eventually people are going to put their stuff in their brain and then you either picture, put it all in your brain because it's just going to happen.
AI in film is a whole other depressing conversation, so maybe we should move on.
Yeah, well, let's go ahead and move into uh, another kind of incentive projects and an important expansion is a building expansion of Fort Worth Stockyards has been put on an indefinite hold due to a legal dispute. Phase two redevelopment of Fort Worth Stockyards is on hold uh, due to, based off a document filed on May 2nd. Majestic Realty Co., former executive vice president Craig Cavalier alleged that a dispute between the developer and its local partner for Stockyards redevelopment, the Hickman Companies, resulted in his firing and has stalled the almost $1 billion redevelopment project. Um, the second phase of redevelopment is expected to double the size of the Stockyards, adding three hotels, 300,000 square feet of commercial space, at least 295 units of multifamily housing, two underground parking garages. Uh, the Fort Worth City Council approved the economic incentive for the project in June uh, of last year. Developers Majestic Realty and Hickman Companies agreed to invest at least $630 million on the project. Construction has yet to begin. Um, have you guys kind of reviewed anything going on in the Stockyards? What is your guys' qualms or things that you think the people should know?
I mean, this all brings back serious PTSD for me, just because my very first council meeting was the Stockyards initial incentives vote, along with whiskey and a whole lot of other things, but it made for a meeting that went until one in the morning.
Wow.
Um, and I know there was a lot of angst and consternation around the redevelopment of the Stockyards. There was worry on the side of folks who are historical preservation-minded, that it was going to ruin the historic nature of the Stockyards. And I think that most people would say that the, the improvements that have come have been a positive and beneficial. Um, they have made it a tourist destination that brings dollars in from people visiting our city that are not taking dollars out or requiring services um, that we have to provide to citizens of Fort Worth. And I think that can be a positive thing. There are worries about gentrification and displacement that can occur to nearby neighborhoods. And there are still concerns that the development that's happening in the Stockyards is a net negative to some of the adjacent neighborhoods or don't include them in uh, the, the thought process and the, the benefit that comes from the dollars that are brought in. And so that's an ongoing conversation that needs to continue. I don't know if the city has timelines built into this second phase. That's typically what they do. Um, and so they may have to either extend those timelines, vote to extend those timelines in order for this to go forward. The thing that always drives me crazy and I, the economic development people might get mad at me for saying this, but many of our economic development incentives around this type of development have been around parking, which drives me insane. We just launched the Orange Line and it is hugely popular and tourists in downtown are taking the Orange Line to the Stockyards. So the idea that we're going to need all these hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of parking spaces in the Stockyards, you know, hopefully in the long run is not going to be the case, but we're putting all these dollars into these parking garages, which makes me nuts. Maybe this pause will result in an ability to rethink the parking garage incentives and/or building parking garages in a way that they can be converted into something else in the future when we maybe don't have as many cars driving to the Stockyards.
Yeah, I know this is probably not possible. I don't know where that North Side Tex Rail stop is compared to Stockyards.
It's on the Orange Line. So you can get off at that Tex Rail stop and take the Orange Line straight into the Stockyards.
That to me is incredible because if you're someone who's like, "Okay, I'm in Dallas, Fort Worth for three or four days." And then, okay, let's do our last minute like Stockyards and then we'll just go to the airport after this.
Yeah.
Like, it feels like a good little.
You could. We, we did actually a tour where we were on the Orange Line and took it to the Tex Rail station in order to take Tex Rail to Grapevine for an event that we had. So it is connected. In the past, it's been the number 15, which I think this rebranding with the colors makes it very simple. And so folks don't have to put a whole lot of energy and effort into figuring out how to get these things connected. So I think that it is, you know, what I mentioned before.
There's a lot of drama though, because of this private partner shop.
There is a lot of drama.
This is, this is a Taylor Sheridan Yellowstone episode, basically, looking at this uh, drama.
Well, the comment I made before was when a lot of money is being made, then typically people start to argue and, and uh, and fight amongst themselves as to who gets to benefit from that. And people are definitely making money on the Stockyards development.
Yep.
Alrighty, we're going to go ahead and move into wins, losses and actions. Uh, we share a win, a loss and an action you can take. Thank you for Wesley for adding the actions into the last episode. I think they went really well.
So I think in the past I have mentioned the fact that a loss has been a loss of a lot of federal funding that has come to organizations that support the arts in our community. And so one of my losses most recently was a loss of federal funding to the Wellman Project specifically. But it appears that Fort Worth Arts nonprofits have seen a spike in community fundraising to support, of support after their NEA grants were cut. And so while I don't know that they have made up those dollars to the level of the federal grants that went away, I think it's encouraging that we have seen local support for these arts organizations. And so I want this win to just also kind of play into our calls to action, that this is the necessary support that we need to see in our communities in order for these arts organizations to continue the great work that they're doing. But I'm glad to see that they have gotten some community support in order to continue that work at this point.
Yes, so keep donating. I got a win this week. Um, the Fort Worth Library reported a boost in uh, numbers this year. So, or last year, really. So they had um, 1.14 million visits to Fort Worth Libraries in 2024, which is a 14% increase over 2023. That's still a little bit below where everything was at pre-pandemic. Uh, but those numbers are, are nice to see. I feel encouraged about that because we have a pretty cool library director right now who is also overseeing the Arts Fort Worth contract. So I'm excited to see, because the library already has so many good resources, like so many things you would not expect in a library, like 3D printers, like something they're working on for the downtown libraries, having a maker's station. Um, so I would encourage everyone to go check out, go get your local library card, go check out your local library. And also, um, you can use the Libby app with your library card too. So a bunch, bunch of good things going on with the library. Everyone should look into it. Let's get those numbers up for 2025 too.
Absolutely. My win is because all the things that's been going on with redistricting, uh, I feel like we've been involved more with organizers, activists, and I've just had the privilege of hanging out with Tarrant Young Dems at their events, also with the Sunrise Tarrant and their events. And my win is just like young people who want to change the world. And we have so many great organizations ran by young people. I mean, the president of Tarrant County Young Dems is 23 years old. You know, like, and to be in a room full of people who have imagination of, and are not afraid to like really be bold on like what they believe, it was just refreshing. I almost felt like I found a home of people and that was really cool. And so I think we should definitely have them on the show, hear more of their stories. And Wesley, good for us. Like we qualify as Tarrant Young County Dems.
I do not, obviously.
I thought I for sure didn't either. I thought it was under 30. Like I thought 30 was it, but they said it was 40.
Yeah. Well, it gets older and older, but it's not going to reach me. So I'm sad about that. But I, the other good thing about this is there's a constant narrative that young people are leaving Fort Worth and Tarrant County. And you know, I gave birth to two Fort Worthians that left. And so I think to see young people active here and doing things here and staying here and having impact on the future that we're going to have in Fort Worth is very much encouraging.
And I mean, what's, what, there is like a tone of like, we hate this place and all those meetings and they're like, ah, this place sucks. But like, we're here, so we might as well like cause some ruckus. And so it's like, but I just like, man, if more people, just the amount of diversity, the, the youthfulness, and I mean, the Tarrant County Young Dems really played a big part to Deborah Peoples getting elected. So that, you know, they're doing things where when you look at the adult orgs that should be doing stuff, they're really taking hold and doing more. And so that's the win.
It's the do something.
Exactly. Yes. Like nowhere gets better on accident. It takes people doing some work.
So I think this week we've kind of settled on the fact that we have a bit of a collective loss or the potential of a collective loss, because we don't want to signal that we're just giving up, that this is inevitable, no matter what we do. But we want people to be braced and ready for what could happen at Commissioner's Court this week on Tuesday. So you'll be listening to this on Monday. We still want everyone to continue with the momentum and the energy and the activism that they have done up to this point to continue to raise their voices and be heard in every opportunity that they have. And that opportunity exists at the Commissioner's Court meeting on the third. However, we understand that those that have been speaking, and not all of them have been speaking about where they stand on these things, they possibly have the votes that they need to move forward in a direction that is not reflective of the majority of voices that have been heard up to this point. But while this is a collective loss, we believe that this momentum has the potential and the possibility to continue. And we just want to encourage folks with our new segment of do something to not just let this be a loss that stops us in our tracks.
And so a couple of things you can do for June 3rd to be a part of this historic moment in Tarrant County is June 3rd at 10 AM, that is when Commissioner Court is. But before Commissioner Court, there's going to be a protest at 8 AM in front of the courthouse. And so there'll be people there at 8 AM protesting. So you can have signs. You'll be able to be around with other people. June 3rd at 10 AM is when the actual meeting occurs. And so we also have the link where you can sign up to do that. It's Agenda Item X A4, consideration of an order to establish new precinct boundaries for the Tarrant County Commissioner Court. Then a couple of us are also going to be making a move to Fort Worth City Council, which is at 6 PM on the same day to also just kind of hold Fort Worth City Council accountable for not voting unanimously and protecting all voices in Fort Worth, you know, oppressing black and brown voices is a silencing of Fort Worth. And so those are also some movement. So you have things throughout the day. You can get there early. You can come at lunch. You can come after work at 6 PM and get involved in some way. And this is a great way to do that as we move into a next, next two years where we got to get ready for the midterm in 2026 and the next municipal election in 2027. I think this power allows us to realize that there's something here that we can dictate and let's get on the offense rather than the defense.
And if you are planning to show up to speak at those meetings, there are deadlines by which you have to sign up both at the county and at the city. So we can share some of those links in the show notes as well, so that people know how to sign up.
Yeah. And I just want to remind people that activism is a long road to, to success. You'll have wins and losses along the way and there's actions everyone can take. But don't let any loss discourage you, like just the fact that we're all energized and care, that in itself is a win. And together, the more we all care and try and do something together, the easier it gets to, to win.
Absolutely. And I think that is why we created the show. It's amazing to see how we've started the show, being informed. Congrats on our videos. I've heard a lot of great success on our videos. You know, I'm just saying, you know, our views had, you know, you know, it wasn't that big, but we had a lot of, you know, a new 150 views. I think that's pretty cool from YouTube that came and showed up. So I think that's really great. So if you're watching on YouTube, subscribe, share with a friend. Also, if you follow us on social media, I love the people who are trying to join the 817 Gather, the Discord. They're like, I don't listen to the podcast, but I see all social media stuff. And so it's just cool seeing people coming from different angles. And so if this is your first show, welcome to the 817 Podcast.